Hello.
There we go.
It is 6:30 on September 8th. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a live feed. And it's working. So, yeah, sorry about that. All, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sorry about that. Are there any additions to the agenda tonight?
Yes, under 6.1, under personnel, we will remove the resignation of Tiana Whitten.
Any other additions or changes to the agenda? I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Michelle, since Debbie's not here, do we have to, like...
No, he's, no, he's good.
Okay, just to make sure.
We do that in July.
Okay.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of August 11th, regular meeting.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion on those minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tonight, we have moved our public participation to the beginning of our meeting. It typically comes after our consent agenda, but due to the topics that we have, the topic that we have in our consent agenda, we have moved it for that point. So that is up next. Please remember that we have revised Policy 2044, which is the public participation at board meetings policy. It limits the public participation to 30 minutes, and it also, as a whole, and it also limits speakers' comments to no more than five minutes. So if you could, please remember that if you come to the mic. Because we are in session tonight, I'd ask for you just to come once to the mic for this time, to make sure that everybody has time to speak if they'd like. So the floor is open for public participation.
Good evening. My name is Luke Douslin. I am a graduate of Hamilton in 2013, and I'll keep my speech short for everybody else's sake. I want to share my experience coming to school here. I had an SRO. The SRO, Tripper DeRochi, he was nothing but a resource to me and all of my friends. I never, and me personally, I never had a negative experience with him, nor have any of my friends. He was always knocking on our doors. We were playing four-square out in the parking lot. He greeted us at the doors. It was all positive. And I feel, my daughter is back there, I asked her if, how she feels about law enforcement or having an SRO. And she said, "Yeah, great, right? I'm in emergency services. A couple of the other guys that are going to speak tonight are in emergency services, and we do fire prevention all the time, trying to get kids exposure to firemen and the fire service." And we're normal people, and all emergency responders are normal people. And I asked her if, if she was scared of law enforcement or would like to have a law enforcement officer in the school. And she said, "Yes, of course." She wants to be a police officer when she grows up. Every kid wants to be a police officer or fireman, right? So I think the more we, the more exposure we can give our kids to this, the more positive the outcomes are going to be. So, yeah, I guess in closing, I certainly hope you guys make the right decision tonight for her sake and your kids' sake.
Pretty scary seeing me in front of a mic, huh? Excuse me if I read this, but if not, I won't, I'll go over my limit because I could talk all night. So my name is Sue Lehman. I'm a math teacher. I've been a teacher here. This is my 26th year, and I've taught in many other districts as well. Both of my boys graduated from Hamilton, and my granddaughter is currently a third grader here, so I have a lot invested in Hamilton. When I first heard that Hamilton had the opportunity to get another SRO, my response was, "Whoa-hoo, yay, you know, let's go. Who are we going to hire and that?" For one second, I never had a negative thought. There was, all of my past experience with SROs have all been positive, so my mind never went to any of the downside. So after I watched the last board meeting, I was like totally thrown for a loop. I'm like, "Wow, am I that naive?" And of course, I am a little bit, but that's beside the point. So I really listened to what people said, and I was concerned. I was kind of impressed that they were citing studies and statistics, but I also know enough about statistics that I didn't believe everything I heard. So after I finished the board meeting, and I'm like, "Wow, Sue, you really better look at this," I, I went and I looked at some of the studies that were cited. And just some of my observations about the studies and about what the comments that were made were. First of all, the studies are pretty interesting, a little concerning. I think for me, the biggest thing that was said at the last board meeting that kind of totally floored me was that one of the studies showed that in the event of an active shooter, the number of fatalities was higher when an SRO was present than when they were not. And to me, that was like, holy, amazing, I was concerned. But I'm looking at the study again, and the study is only able to provide results when there was an active shooter. There's no study that can tell us how many SROs may have prevented the whole event from ever occurring, because you can't measure something that never happens. You know, you can't count how many times this didn't happen. And that's not mentioned in that study at all. Also, not just that study, but there are several others that I looked up. And we need to just kind of watch how you interpret them, because there's a lot of other outside variables that contribute to things. You know, the size of the school, the location of the school, the size of the police force, whether the school is just elementary or just high school. All of those things enter into it. You know, I happened to pull, because I was so upset by that other statistic I heard, I happened to go do a different site, the National Safety Security Protection Association. If you go there, you're going to see the information that an SRO during an active shooter event, an SRO, the time that the event lasts goes from an average of eight minutes down to two minutes if an SRO is present. Okay? So I'm like, "Okay, that makes me feel a little bit better from what I heard." But the fact of the matter is, if we spend a little more time, we can all find another five, 10, 20 studies that are going to show what we want them to show. But with all of the other variables that are affecting those results, I just don't know that we can count on those or that we should give them all that much credit. And I have to say that out of all of the things I thought of, I think the variable that contributes the most would be the training of the SRO. And we know that Madison County has a great record training their SROs. That's going to have the most impact. We don't know what kind of training the other ones went to. Maybe there was none. So I just hope that you kind of reconsider everything, and I hope that, you know, we've talked about this a lot, and you've considered everything, and that you hire an SRO. And I hope you agree to do it soon, because there's a limited number of SROs in Madison County, and I hope we don't miss out on one. Thanks.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Renee Merk, as you know, and I've been a teacher at HCS for 21 years and an educator for 26 years. I'm here tonight in support of adding an SRO to our staff at Hamilton Central School. I'd like to speak from my three different roles at HCS. The first is a classroom teacher in elementary and special education. I take great pride in being cognizant of student safety. In recent years, it's become very clear that this responsibility is incredibly heavy. I believe that having another professional on our team that is trained in de-escalation strategies, has strong communication skills, and can teach and model problem-solving strategies will make us stronger. My new position at HCS, the Coordinator of Social Emotional Learning and Family Engagement, is all about building community and relationships. When I first heard that we were exploring the option of hiring an SRO, I immediately thought about building a collaborative relationship with this part of our community and modeling for students how we can work together toward the common goals of safety, learning, and wellness. I look forward, I would look forward to working together with an SRO in my new position to promote those goals in creative ways for the student body through assemblies and wellness activities and programming. And finally, my most important role as a mom of two HCS grads and a current junior. Without a doubt, having an SRO at HCS would give me a personal sense of comfort as a parent. Thank you.
You don't know me. My name is John Bondy. We're new to town. We just bought a house on Hamilton, or, excuse me, an airport road. We're the second house from the airport. I have four children in this school. There, I have a first grader, I have a sixth grader, a seventh grader, and my son back there is a senior this year. Me personally, I'm not sure what the big ruckus was before I wasn't here for that meeting, but I'm not sure what the big deal is. The way I look at it is that in today's day and age, we need all the help we can get in this school to ensure the safety of our children. Teachers are trained how to barricade their doors. These kids go through duck-and-cover drills and learn how to hide in the corner of the classroom. None of us went through that, not a single one of us. There was no such thing as, as a, as a, you know, active shooter drill. It didn't exist. This is a weird new thing, and it's everywhere, and nobody can say it's not going to happen here. Columbine High School, they all said that. "It's not going to happen here." What are you talking about? That would never happen. Okay? Sandy Hook, beautiful school, very clean, very nice, you know, a ranked school in the nation. And, you know, we saw what happened there, okay? We can't say it's never going to happen here. We don't know that. Just like Ms. Lehman said, we cannot use statistics on a hypothetical. A hypothetical doesn't work, okay? All I can say is that I would be much more comfortable with a well-trained SRO. Am I right? The SRO has SRO training, right? Specific training, like specific training just for this job, okay? And it's not something they take lightly. And the way I see it is however many tens of thousands of dollars it takes, $15,000, was that the number? I don't, $19,000. My kids are worth $19,000 for the protection of the officer. I know everybody else here feels that way. I know that you want your kids, and worth certainly more than $19,000, are priceless. Our kids are priceless to us. And I would come in here with my own gun if I could and make sure that they're safe, but we all know that that's not practical. The practical solution is to use law enforcement the way they're intended. Law enforcement are there to protect the children just as much as they're there to arrest the bad guys, okay? And they're trained to do this stuff, special training. And last thing, I promise, I'm sorry, the last thing is, I want my children to have a positive experience with law enforcement. There's way more negative experience online right now. Every video I see that comes through on Facebook is a negative view on law enforcement. There are bad apples, obviously. We have bad teachers, bad lawyers, I know a ton of those, you know, horrible doctors. But most, the vast majority of them are very good. Most of the people who know me would never think that I'd stand up here and say this today, okay? I am a very democratic person, I'm not afraid to say that. But what I will say here, standing here today, is I'm afraid for my children, and I want that officer in there for peace of mind. I really do. That's my thought, and that's the way I see it. Thank you for your time tonight.
My name is Maura Tumulty. I have two kids in the school now. My grandfather retired from the NYPD. I'm married to a prosecutor. I am very pro-law enforcement. I am not afraid of law enforcement. My sense is that this is a done deal. I just want to express my grave and serious concern that HCS is ceding far too much to the county and the sheriff's office in the way the contract is being written, in the way the training is understood, in the way the legal and physical risks are being gamed out about the consequences of having an SRO as opposed to having one. I don't have a problem with law enforcement. I don't have a problem with law enforcement in the school. I am seriously worried that HCS is walking into a situation without reserving to itself enough control over how this will go and how HCS will find the courage to act if, as we all hope it doesn't happen, something doesn't go well. So I just want to repeat that there's reasons for being concerned that have nothing to do with mistrust or disdain for law enforcement in general. So I'm just asking that the board really, if you go this way, which part of me hopes you won't, but if, as I sense you're going that way, that you really think carefully about what kind of control you might be ceding.
I'm Ed Witherspoon. I am the father of two graduates of this school and one current student. I've been listening to the considerations in favor of the SRO, the way an SRO can build relationships and be a member, a positive member of the school team, and I take that very seriously, and also in terms of providing security. I guess I'd just like to ask two questions, ask you to reflect on two questions. Could many of those benefits from getting an SRO be achieved by a staff member who was not armed? Is it necessary for the SRO to carry a weapon into the school? The reason why I raise that question is, I mean, in some contexts of active shooters, maybe it would be useful for him to have a weapon, maybe not. I know the statistics, you know, I'm not going to argue the statistics either way on that one. But active shooters, occasions are very, I mean, even one is too many, but they are very rare, and it's hard to generalize from them, as people have commented. But I do worry that just the presence of a deadly weapon on, you know, in the school, even in the hands of a well-trained person, does introduce the possibility of an accident, either an accidental misjudgment by the officer or, you know, just some, you know, an accidental discharge of the weapon. So there's a, you know, having a deadly weapon in the school introduces a risk, even though it's slight, it is still some kind of risk. Do we have to run that risk? We do have a Hamilton Police Force that is, you know, very capable and very quick to respond. And so is an alternative to having someone with a gun in the school, being able, having someone who could make contact with the Hamilton Police Force? Another question I would ask, and it actually picks up on Maura Tumulty's comment about ceding control, how much control is being ceded to the school, and this is just a question. If a law enforcement officer, an SRO, sees or becomes aware of, you know, a crime being committed at the school, is that officer obliged to act on it so as to arrest or to pursue the crime in a way in which school, the school, other school professionals would judge wasn't really in the interest of the children? I'm thinking of, I don't know, a kid talks about, "Hey, I want to sell you some drugs." If the officer gets wind of that, do they have to take action on that? If a school official got wind of that, they might talk to the, you know, talk to the kids, you know, suss out what was going on and find a non-legal way to deal with the situation. What would happen if a, an SRO got wind of something that might be illegal happening? Would they be obliged to take action that would not be what was best for the child and the judgment of other school professionals? That's my question. Thank you.
My name is Brenton Sullivan. I have two children in the elementary school here. We haven't heard really too many objections to the hiring of an SRO tonight, and, and I'm not going to really offer one either, although I would, I am one that would suggest, you know, rethinking how that $19,000 might be spent. Maybe it could be redirected to raising the hiring salary of the social worker that was promised in the spring, but for which I understand there have been zero to, very few applicants or... or to raising the hiring salary of a school psychologist, since I understand ours just resigned. But the point I want to make is, I guess, building on a couple that were just now made in terms of ceding control. I have spoken with an attorney who has represented several school boards in precisely this issue. And I've looked at contracts between school boards in other municipalities and other places. And it appears that the draft contract, at least the initial draft contract that was sent around, has serious omissions and oversights. And that that makes the school and the school board liable. So in particular, if you look just for example, and the Syracuse School District's contract with its police force and city, there are several pages that outline what discipline is, what it is not. And more specifically, what the roles and limitations of a school resource officer are, as well as the school, as well as school administrators and staff. And then there are several pages that pertain to other things that really, there's either nothing in the current draft or, or not enough pertaining to staff training, what it is, what it will look like, when it will happen, data collection and when that data will be made public. And then things such as arrests and seizures, interrogations and interviews, use of force. All of these things are real matters. And these are, these are far more likely to be the things that come up than active shooters. And, and so I think it's incumbent upon the board to make sure that all those things be made explicit in the contract with the sheriff and that this not be just a gentleman's agreement. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Okay. Good morning, or good afternoon. My name is Johanna Bosserd and I'm here tonight as a teacher, a community member, and a parent. As a teacher at HCS for the past thirteen years and now a student's parent for the past five years, I've seen a lot of changes over those years. But the purpose and our mission of why we're all here is still the same. To better our children through education and provide them with as many opportunities for growth as possible. I was surprised to hear that the board has been struggling with the decision to approve a school resource officer. So I've gone back, watched previous board meetings, reread the, and reread the published questions. Previous to this, I was in support of hiring an SRO and I remain in support today. As a teacher, I can honestly say that our kids today are dealing with way more pressures than when I even started teaching a mere thirteen years ago. Be that of social pressures, emotional pressures, peer pressures, mental health, bullying, technology, social media, drugs and alcohol, socioeconomic pressures, abuse, harassment, academic pressures, and the list just goes on and on. Teaching is all about relationships. I have kids that tell me sometimes way more than I want to know. But that is because I am their trusted adult in this school and I am their person. At HCS, we have amazing counselors, educators, TAs, bus drivers, support staff, administration, and each of those people help to build strong bonds and relationships with our students. By adding an SRO, that gives our students one more person in our school to be their trusted adult. Absolutely, that person needs to be vetted extensively, as many people have said and I couldn't agree with more. But the right person, it could be a huge asset to our school and community. As I listened back to previous board meetings, I was especially struck by a couple of comments regarding what threshold of kids an SRO needed to impact to make it worth implementing this program. The comment stated that they believe that if an SRO doesn't work for one kid, then it wouldn't be worth it. And our common practice of trying and then evaluating the program at HCS wasn't adequate. I thought about that comment a lot, a real lot. And I also came up with a number one, but in a little bit different of a context. What if an SRO has a positive effect on one child that chooses not to act out in violence? What if an SRO helps to stop one bullying incident? What if an SRO prevents one child's suicide? Or mitigates one fight? What if an SRO makes one student want to come to school more often? What if an SRO stops Hamilton one time from being a headline in the evening news for a tragic event? Then I believe that an SRO affecting one child is worth the investment. As I reflect back on my thirteen years of teaching, I'm reminded of many changes to the ways in which we have tried and then evaluated various new programs within our school. We've been asked to change ways we instruct, the content that we teach, implement new standards that are instated, ways we discipline, evaluations, et cetera, et cetera. These have all been changes led by our administration and our school board to help us reach our school goals. I see the addition of an SRO as an added change to be able to help everybody. Thank you for your time. I appreciate your, your understanding.
Hey, everybody. I'm Zach Darrow. For those of you that don't know me, I'm a Hamilton alum, a parent of two elementary students, a teacher, a coach, and the president of the Hamilton Teachers Association. I just wanted to address the board briefly in regards to the school resource officer. Last week, the faculty and staff were fortunate enough to have the opportunity to receive the training and restorative practices. Thank you. And the main theme that we got from that, as, as we've heard a few times tonight, was relationship building. I see the hiring of an SRO as an opportunity for our students to form a relationship with a member of the law enforcement community that a lot of them won't ever have a chance to do outside these walls, other than in passing, maybe. You know, it was stated in the previous meeting that the presence of an SRO might make students nervous or scared. But why not see it as a means of breaking down some of the stigmas that are often attached to law enforcement in our country? In Mr. Dowson's opening in the last meeting, he spoke about how throughout the pandemic, we listened to all the experts in the healthcare field when developing a plan for our district. And we, we've also heard from the experts in the field of school safety. They've overwhelmingly supported hiring an SRO. Our administrative team and chief of Mr. Dowson are often offered a certain amount of autonomy with regards to running the district and making appropriate decisions that are in the best interest of students, staff, and the community. Mr. Dowson's given his recommendation to the school board to hire an SRO and myself, along with the majority of our HCS faculty, fully support that. Thank you for your time.
Hey, everyone. My name's Zach Newkirk. I got two kids here at the school and my wife Shannon works here for the school. You know, during COVID, we were all about if it saves one life, right? Masks, vaccines, lockdowns, if it just saves one life. A little bit about myself, I was in the Army for seven years. I was deployed to Afghanistan for a year. I was a combat engineer. I looked for roadside bombs. Has anyone here ever been in a gunfight? A couple of you? Okay. Those that have, I think, can attest to the fact that it's pretty crazy. And, you know, I'd like to think I'm pretty qualified to speak on that scenario. But it's a difficult conversation to have with your children. I've seen grown men trained for such scenarios hesitate and wet themselves in a moment where action was needed most. And now I got to prepare my children for the actions that they need to take in these scenarios. I couldn't help but notice that at the last meeting, a lot of people wanted more stats and assumed that the school had basically already made the decision. And my question is, why not? Seventy-two point eight percent of the staff said it was a good idea and fifty-nine percent of the parents who sent back surveys said it was a good idea. That alone seems like it was a go-ahead. There seemed to be a lot of people from Colgate at the last meeting and I heard a lot of good points generally against having an officer in the school. So I would urge everyone to go onto Colgate's website and look up, there's a job posting for a safety officer on their website. His job qualifications and the qualifications of the school SRO overlap really, really well. Also, I believe they're trying to arm their, their security officers. This is what I heard. Anyone want to take a stab at how much those guys get paid versus what we're trying to pay in SRO? But according to their website, they have fourteen of these safety officers and two supervisors for a little over three thousand students. So using just simple math, that's one officer per every two hundred and thirty students, where we have almost six hundred students, you know, and we're just, we're trying to hire one. So, by the way, I'd also like to point out that SUNY colleges all across New York all have armed security that are all actually a part of the Division of State Police. So why would we not afford this to our children, but we afford this same protection to people who are essentially adults? Also, at the last meeting, I heard a lot of, you know, studies show, and there have been lots of studies, if only just saying that made it true. You brought up to the, the main study that everyone keeps bringing up, the Peterson-Densley study. I'm looking at incidents that occurred from nineteen eighty to two thousand and nineteen. And I think we could all agree that the world is a very different place from two thousand and nineteen. Lots of time has passed and lots of things have happened. It's hard to put an accurate number on the amount of school shootings that have happened, but that looked at one hundred and thirty-three cases. And from that study, only twenty-nine cases had an RSO present. So that's twenty-three point five eight percent that's in the study. And the study used theory and multivariate models to come up with the conclusion. And from what I can tell with little information. Not only that, but it makes the, but the, the study itself says that there's no way to show how many incidents the SRO would have stopped due to lacking public debt. Hamilton's a pretty diverse school. I know that was a lot of things that people brought up. We're right behind Canistota and Oneida as far as diversity in the county. And it seemed like a lot of people were concerned about that because that's what they said they were most concerned about. Where, where, you know, the increased interactions between the SRO and children of color, historically marginalized communities, LGBTQIA communities, people in neurodiversities, other disabilities, and people who are gender non-conforming. However, you know, call me old-fashioned, but what I'm most concerned about is my children dying in an active shooter event. Okay, okay, thank you. I'll just read my last paragraph, okay? Basically, at the last meeting, it seemed like a bunch of grandstanding. But to give some credit, though, I believe a lot of the issues that brought up as far as responsibilities of the SRO being too much were correct. And that shouldn't be painted as a way to put trust in law enforcement. I believe that this would come naturally. Okay, all right.
All right, bear with me. I'm going to rifle through this so I don't run over. Hello, my name is Ryan Regal. I am the parent and a relative of children who are and shortly will be attending school at HCS. I am currently a member of three emergency response agencies within our county. While I am not here representing any of those agencies, I do share that information with you just to justify my knowledge and training of emergency situations and also of mitigation and preventative measures and techniques. When the unspeakable happens in our schools and an active shooter situation becomes our reality, I believe having a well-trained individual in situational awareness and threat assessment on sight is imperative for saving lives. Someone well-trained in prevention and threat identification, such as de-escalation, verbal judo, communications, relationship building, and threat assessment would be monumentally advantageous as an additional resource, not only to the school, but to the faculty and the entire community. Threat assessment techniques, sorry. The focus should be on training. Someone trade and identifying red flags, creating and initiating safety plans, and linking other resources into the discussion in a timely manner. A resource trained in these types of awareness and de-escalation techniques, whom, by the way, is also plugged in with local contacts concerning other threats and other threat management within local school systems, is able to locate and assist in mitigating threats greatly improves upon the survival rate of our children. When the moment happens, time matters and time kills. The faster an individual can assist in seeing stability and organized resources will dictate the outcome and will save lives. I don't see how we could rob our children and faculty of this resource. Watching the first board meeting, I heard how this SRO would be greeting students arriving in the morning, walking throughout the halls, checking on safety and entrance and egress points. These tasks put our SRO in the perfect place to maintain, change, or improve upon any life safety measures and tactics, all while maybe walking down the hallway and seeing a child that's having a bad day. Who knows what they're going through at home? They just have an outburst, they slam a locker. The SRO happens to be walking up the hallway and says, hey, I see you're frustrated. Why don't we go for a walk? Why don't we go grab a cookie and an intense chocolate milk out of the cafeteria? Why don't we go play four-square? These things could help so much and there is no statistic that shows us what that can do. The focus should be on training. It is our job, our responsibility to put our kids and school personnel in the best position to succeed, including through a horrific situation. I don't see how we could deprive our community of this resource. I truly believe that implementing the use of the SRO would be the best use of taxpayers' money and the best step we can take to putting someone on the front lines of protecting our loved ones. I would like to close in stating that I would really, really not like to be in your seats should the safety of our children be brushed aside by not opting into this SRO program. After all, we are talking about nineteen thousand dollars to save a child's life. Thank you.
Hi, I'm not very good at this, so. My name is Sheila Catania. I'm a mother of four children here at HCS. They're in tenth, eighth, fifth, and third. I live about nine minutes from the school and I have lived and paid taxes in the school district since two thousand and five. I'm a very busy working mother, running a health and wellness center in Eton, New York. I'm also president of the PTO since two thousand and nineteen and have been an active member of the PTO for ten years. I've also volunteered at countless events at HCS. As I enter my tenth year, or my eleventh, excuse me, at HCS, I'm always grateful knowing that my children are in the best hands possible. My busy children are part of the athletics, orchestra, band, and theater. I am one hundred percent in favor of hiring an SRO. To add another layer of protection for our children is a no-brainer for me. I know that there are statistics and studies that have negative connotations for hiring an SRO. But let's be real, you can find studies for and against any topic. I was one of the few that watched the July board meeting. I recently viewed the August board meeting. I feel the board, Mr. Dowson, and the whole team have done an excellent job in bringing this subject to parents and the community. A survey went out, an informative board meeting in July, a draft of the potential, a draft, not the final, potential SRO agreement, and a second board meeting, and frequently asked questions on the HCS homepage. I myself have been at this school hundreds of times over the past ten years. I know ninety-five percent of the teachers, administration, and staff by name. I know most of the teachers' kids and spouses' names, too. I've always been confident they are making the best decisions for our children. At the end of the day, the teachers, staff, and administrations are the ones here with our kids, not the board, not parents, and not community members. If an incident were to occur, I have a higher percentage of a Catania being involved the most. I have one in the high school, one in the middle, and two in elementary. I also have a niece and two nephews and friends' children that I consider family in this. I grew up in the suburbs of Kansas City. We had an armed officer in full uniform in every school I went to, and I never gave it a thought. I would feel better knowing that an SRO is at our school, interacting positively with our children, and knowing that he would protect them with his life if it came down to it. How many other people do you know that would do that? It is our duty to protect our children.
So in, following the policy, we have actually exceeded the 30-minute timeline. As the board, good with?
I would like to keep going.
Thanks for giving me this chance to make one final comment. First, I want to say thank you to the board and the exhaustiveness and seriousness with which you've dealt with this problem. And I think the fact that so many people have spoken up, that we have so many teachers here, so many parents, so many concerned community members, is a testament to that you made the right decision last board meeting. Because it's been really informative, I think, for all of us to hear, especially for me, from, from teachers, people that work at the school. So that's been, that's been really enlightening. And just the same as our kids have the right to go to a school where they feel safe, so do teachers as workers have the right to feel safe where they work. And, and I'm not, for those reasons, I'm not up here saying that we should not have an SRO officer. I think that so many of the things that have been said about the kinds of relationships that officers can build with students, that students can build with officers, the things that they might be able to offer the, the, the community, I think those all sound like really, really great things. The only thing that concerns me, and I think that other people, is clarity. Clarity between what is an SRO's, you know, area of operation, to put it in those terms, and what is the teachers', and what is the administrators'. I think just having, and maybe it's the, the contract that makes it seem like those things haven't been thought out, and maybe they have. So I think that there would be a lot more agreement in the room if those things were clear. Because in the end, we all want the same things. We all want this to be a safe school for students, for the staff, for the faculty, and for all the other community members who are a part of this, you know, this, the school, this community. So I really thank everyone's comments, and to all of you for giving us this last chance before you, you know, take the vote. Thank you.
I don't see anybody standing up, and there has been no comments online. I'm not turned on. Thank you all. Let's try that again. I'm not used to the microphone. I don't see anybody standing up, and I don't see any comments online, and so I appreciate the time and energy that everybody has put into coming and participating in this community participation session of our meeting. That brings us to our consent agenda. We will be doing the consent agenda slightly different this evening. We will be doing each item separately, so there will be separate motions. Typically, for those of you that don't come, we do it in one foul swoop. The conversation's one foul swoop, and then it's one vote. So now we will vote on each item separately. So I need a motion to accept the transportation report. It wasn't written out in my paper. Usually it's written out.
Gotcha.
Did I say that right? Sounds good.
Yeah.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to revise Abigail Riley's appointment to modified girls soccer coach for 2022-2023 season as recommended by the athletic director and superintendent.
I'll move.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to rescind the appointment of Sarah Zagby as a modified soccer coach for the 2022-2023 season as recommended by the athletic director and superintendent.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to approve Sarah Zagby as an unpaid coach for the girls soccer program for 2022-2023 season as recommended by the athletic director and superintendent.
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to take from the table the school resource officer agreement from the August 8, 2022, board meeting.
I'll move.
Second.
Discussion?
This is just to take it from the table, right? And then we'll have another motion.
Correct.
So I actually do have discussion, and I, like many other people, wrote some things down.
Is it about taking it from the table?
No. I don't, no.
We'll have another motion.
Okay, got it. Yes, thank you.
I didn't mean to cut you off, but I want it in the right spot.
No, thank you. You're right.
All those in favor?
Of taking it from the table.
Of taking it from the table.
Aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to enter into an agreement with the Madison County Sheriff's Office for the school resource officer services during the 2022-2023 school year as recommended by the superintendent.
Now, hold up. My understanding of how tabling a motion works is that it was tabled last year. We just untabled it, so we're now back in the motion as it was.
Which is what that is.
But what I'm saying is it doesn't have to get moved from here. We're in that motion now. If you want to do it as a safeguard, I'm free to, but we're currently back in that motion.
We're in that, so you can have discussion.
We don't need a motion.
So we don't need that motion then?
Yeah, which I believe I moved. Somebody owns second.
Second. Yes. Yeah. So you can have a discussion on that original motion at this time.
Okay. So discussion.
And the original motion as written is to enter into an agreement with the Madison County Sheriff's Office. It is not to enter into the contract as proposed. It is to enter into an agreement.
It's to enter into an agreement, not the draft contract. So that contract can be revised.
Other discussion?
This is my time to share my, my space?
So I just wanted to share some thoughts publicly, and like many others, I wrote them down so as not to lose them. And I wanted to share my journey through this process because I do take this job very seriously. This is my ninth year on the school board, and these decisions impact a lot of people, and, and we try, as always, to keep our focus on the students. And that said, several weeks ago when we started these discussions, I went back and looked through my notes about school resource officers and was surprised to find that I had notes all the way back to 2013 about considering school resource officers. And at that time, when we first talked about it, I thought, why not? That's, yeah, why would we not do this? And then I started reading. And yes, I, there is data, and there were concerns, and I was seriously concerned about some of the things that I read. But the programs for school resource officers at that time were very different than the program now. And at that point, none of us were talking about restorative practices. Most of us had not even begun to peel back layers of thinking about implicit bias, systemic racism, or those things. And, and as I read the information then, and I read about the programs then, I, I really did feel that there were significant risks. So we're fast forward to the meeting in July, when Sergeant Fiola and her team came, and I was pleasantly surprised by what they presented about how much the difference had in the training, the intentionality of the programs, and how much had changed. That officers were being trained in restorative practices and understanding neurodiversity and neurodevelopment of students, that they went through implicit bias training and cultural competency training. And it is absolutely clear to me that the heart behind everybody that is involved in that program is in the right place, that their heart and a desire is in the right place. But I can't say I don't still have reservations. We told, we've been told over and over again that there's no data, that there's any negative outcomes from having school resource officers in the region, that we can't be given any data. And I don't understand how a program that's been present for this many years can tell us that there's no negative outcome without being able to tell us what the outcomes are. And it actually concerns me a little bit that I don't know how they're monitoring their outcomes. And so that is one of my concerns and, and one of my reservations. Again, I worry about, do what, you know, most of the needs of what we're looking for for an SRO require an armed officer. But I also know that this district has already invested great time and resources into providing many layers of safety to support students, including restorative practices. That's been a model years in the making. We've been working years to bring that practice, and I'm so happy that the training happened this week. That makes me so happy. And while we're struggling to fill some of those positions, I know that we have poured our support into the social and emotional learning and family engagement position, the social worker, and the social emotional health. The social emotional program, again, has been developing here for years, and so those are things. Again, I, you know, I, I think we need to be a little bit careful in, in putting all of our eggs in the basket of an armed SRO making a huge difference in outcome for a school shooting. But that doesn't mean there aren't other values. And while I continue to have reservations about the SRO, as we have discussed all of this, and I hear from this, I also hear from the district leadership that this is something needed. And this is a district leadership team that we have trusted, that we have worked together with closely, and that I know prioritizes student safety. And so it's also a leadership team that has actively pursued SEL, restorative practices, DEI training, and I have to respect that. But I also feel that if we are going to move forward to this with this support decision, I need you to hear from me that I think we need to take into account many of the concerns that have been raised here, and I, for lack of a better way to say it, about building guardrails on this system, being clear on our expectations. There are now published best practices for using an SRO, and I thank the community member who brought us the Syracuse contract. I think it's a great example of things I would want to see. The purpose of statement focuses on health, safety, and welfare of students, and specifically reinforces that schools are meant to be places where students can learn from their mistakes in order to grow into healthy and productive adults. It goes on to set goals and objectives. Two of those, number one goal and objective of the program is to reduce justice system involvement of all students. I think that is many of our concerns, and those are some of the things we've talked about. It also talks about teaching children to take responsibility for their actions and preventing patterns of delinquencies by creating connections and creating support networks. And so I want to, I just want to share my path and share those because I know many of you have seen me as someone who's been raising the questions and asking the questions, and that's my path to that and the reasons for that. And if we do move forward, I just, I need that discussion to be part of what's going on as we move forward. That's my discussion.
Yeah. I also have something to say. I hope it, it will be lengthy. I'm sorry. I think it's important to acknowledge that everyone here agrees that our kids should be kept safe and feel safe while they are in school. We're all working toward the same goal despite any difference in opinion. It's also important that we recognize that this issue is both politically and emotionally fraught. None of us can bear to imagine living through school shooting tragedies that have become all too familiar in this country. What we all know would be neglectful to pretend that something like that could never happen here. Our community is divided about whether the school would benefit from hiring a school resource officer. Personally, I've based my decision on academic research as opposed to industry or special interest research, which can be much more extreme on either end. And that research has shown the school resource officers are not the most effective form of promoting school safety. There are a lot, there are a lot of opinions about police presence in schools, but what I have sought out is research based on data. Michael Heiss and Jason P. Nance have analyzed national data, and they urge that we look at the issue dispassionately. They say, "While such decisions will inevitably, inevitably involve some degree of political calculation, surrendering these decisions to an unusually politicized environment and with total disregard for available data invites self-defeat. Indeed, it is precisely moments like these where, where political emotions appear especially raw and inflamed when a good faith commitment to following data is at a premium." Heiss and Nance use various models to control for a wide variety of factors, including rural versus urban districts. After parsing the data, they report, "We find consistent evidence that across virtually all our models that a school's SRO police presence exerts upward influence on the school's inclination to report students, student incidents to law enforcement agencies. This finding persists even when we focus on nonviolent student disciplinary incidents." The increased referrals of students to law enforcement is a key factor in early criminalization of children. Even in cases where a student may be cleared of any charges, I believe the mere act of escalating discipline to a level of law enforcement has a potential to stigmatize a child and hinder their potential. Rachel Renbarger, David Redfield, and Tracy Solak have published a wide-ranging review of academic literature regarding the effectiveness of SROs. Their research drew some very obvious conclusions for them. They say, "From this review, current evidence suggests SROs provide more drawbacks than benefits within schools. We suggest a replacement of SROs with more evidence-based practices when possible, and when not, with systems designed to minimize the drawbacks, effect, the drawbacks effects of long-term student outcomes. Until these standards and evaluation, until these standards and evaluation provide stronger evidence of the positive impact of SROs, schools should consider their allocations of limited resources to SROs rather than to prac, to practices that have stronger evidence supporting them, such as more proactive methods of behavior management and prevention, such as multi-tiered, with multi-tiered systems of support, and positive school climate." My reading of this research indicates that I must oppose the hiring of a school resource officer. Just as it would be negligent to assume that a school shooting could never happen here, it is just as willfully ignorant to suggest that somehow our school district is somehow immune to the realities that a school resource officer could have a negative effect on some students. I have no doubt that there are sincere people who have had positive interactions with school resource officers, but there are people who have had, been just as sincerely harmed by them as well. We cannot base our decision on anecdotal evidence, and I have no, not received any firm data that disproves the thorough academic research that I have seen. We should put our school resources toward the things that have been proven to make social schools safer for kids, such as increased access to social workers, social emotional learning, and psychological assistance. Evidence in favor of SROs is at best mixed. The, the research about improving social, emotional, and psychological services is clear. It increases safety and school outcomes across the board. There's only one drawback, and it's monetary. If we are in a situation that does not financially allow for all of these things, I have faith that this community is willing to support a budget that would make that possible. I've never lived in anywhere with a community that is as passionate about education and making a public school better for everyone. In so many instances, adults in our country have failed to come together to solve social issues. The burden of this failure always filters down to the most vulnerable in our society. The issue of school violence and mass shootings is disproportionately borne by our children, either as victims of the violence or increased vigilance and criminalization of their behavior. I think we can do better here by making the hard decision to fund greater social, emotional, and psychological services before resort to the increased police presence. I have no doubt that some people may benefit from a school resource officer's presence. In fact, my children are in the demographic, demographic that are most likely to benefit from that. But our mission statement is every student, every day. There's too much evidence that a school resource officer can have a negative effect on small segments of school in ways that may not even be reported by students, but may leave deep psychological scars. I urge all of you to vote against this proposition. At the time, at the same time, I am an advocate and defender of the democratic process. After voting, I believe that the school board's members' duty is to support the district. I applaud many members of our community who have already suggested ways that we can make this SRO's position work best for our community. We can make the process transparent, and we can make it safe, as, as safe as possible. I'm committing to doing all that I can do to make the best of whatever situation comes as a result of this vote. I would urge our community and the rest of the board of ours, and our school staff to likewise join in finding a unity to make life better for our students and not resort to continued contention, which will ultimately only harm kids more than it does the rest of us. Thanks.
If you don't mind, I'd like to say my piece. Whenever I tell people that I'm a board member, the typical response is, why? Why would you? Why would you subject yourself to that? No matter what you do, people will be upset with you." My point is that the decisions that we individually make as board members and collectively make as a board are occasionally difficult. These decisions can be difficult for multiple reasons. Sometimes we, as board members, have been made aware of pertinent information, information that we legally and ethically cannot disclose to the public. Such information, as one would imagine, often plays a part in our decisions. Sometimes these decisions are influenced by laws, policies, or legal reasoning. Sometimes these decisions we are tasked with pose us a moral or personal, political, ideological conflict. Personally, in my time here, I have made numerous decisions as a board member that somewhat go against my own personal beliefs, but the decisions that I have made are rooted in what is right for the district, as they should be. At the end of the day, I've learned that I can't make all of the people happy all the time. I can only try to make most of the people happy most of the time. I value the input of the community. I value the input of my peers beside me. This is no doubt a hot topic, and I'm respectful of everyone's opinion regardless of whether I agree with it or not. To that, know that for those opinions that I do not agree with, I spend the time and effort to better understand. Admittedly, by doing so, sometimes I change my own views and in turn, my decision. I do not wish to partake in an echo chamber. I value the diversity of thought present in this room and expressed over the last few months. I'm overwhelmingly thankful for the time and effort everyone has contributed. There's been a lot of information to digest, more than you might imagine, yet I'm thankful to be put in a position where such a broad array of information and concerns are at my fingertips. So here we are today. We're discussing a motion that, in short, would approve the hiring of a school resource officer. As a board member, as a school board, we are responsible for the safety and well-being of our district's students and staff. That responsibility is of paramount importance in my decision-making, as it should be. Since I moved this original motion, it should come as no surprise to anyone that I fully support the hiring of an SRO. I have weighed all pertinent information, and by doing so, this is where I have landed. If this motion passes, I would advise the concerns that have been raised are taken into proper account by the appropriate school personnel. As I mentioned before, we are fortunate to have a diversity of thought. To exemplify that statement at its furthest point, I take you back to this time last year, where after a public meeting, I and those beside me were called some bad things for our handling of required COVID protocols. We faced many opposing voices in the last year, but ultimately we knew that those voices were not indicative of the collective whole. Now here we are this year, seemingly at the other end of the climate spectrum. It is my observation that, as with before, I say this respectfully, the loudest voices often do not represent the collective whole. To the subject of data and statistics, I offer this. I get the concept of relying on data, but data is relative. Not all data is situationally relevant for topics such as SROs. Not all data is possible to obtain. If school A, B, C hires an SRO, it is impossible to always prove that this was a deterrent or damage-controlling. Maybe student A might be so troubled that they ultimately would resort to violence against their peers. Maybe by having an SRO, student A would have been deterred to do so, or possibly formed a relationship with the SRO that swayed them from acting out in violence. In such a situation, data is impossible to extract. Conversely, data can be drawn that quantifies instances of discrimination by an SRO, for example. Knowing that not all data in support of hiring an SRO is possible to obtain, I cannot solely rely on the existing data. Here is relevant data that I can offer with you today, though, as I feel it does prove the value of hiring an SRO. Twenty-five days ago, at a high school in Stockton, California, a student drew a loaded gun during a fight. A SRO was quickly able to disarm the student without firing their weapon. What would have happened if an SRO was not present, I implore you to contemplate. One week ago today, at a school in Jacksonville, North Carolina, a student drew a knife during a fight, ultimately sadly killing a fellow student and injuring another along with a teacher. Within 20 seconds of receiving word, a SRO was on scene and dissolved the situation without firing their weapon. It is worth noting that this particular school just recently expanded their security, including the addition of SROs at every campus. Again, what might have happened there if there was no SRO to call in that desperate time of need? These two incidents happened after our last board meeting, a meeting where the board chose to postpone the decision to hire an SRO. Imagine if you will if the board in North Carolina had done the same. My point here is that time is of the essence. These unfortunate events can happen anywhere, anytime. It is the sad world we live in. The argument has been made that the answer to school gun violence is not more guns. I refer that argument to the two recent incidents I just shared. In both cases, it could be reasonably argued that by having a gun, that was the deciding factor in diffusing the situation. If the officer or a school official had tried to resolve those situations with just the power of their words or their hands, it's likely these situations would have taken a worse turn. Look, I personally don't like guns that much. Admittedly, they sometimes make me squeamish. When in the hands of properly trained people in reasonable situations, however, I'm personally not that worried. So when people raise a concern over a gun being in the school, I hear your concerns. I do, but I feel the need is justified. I bring up these worst-case scenarios because, forbid, if anything horrible were to happen here, where someone was harmed or worse, I would not be able to face the mirror every morning knowing that a decision I had made could have possibly made a difference or saved a life. I'll gladly sit and have a heartfelt conversation with a parent who feels that an SRO is harmful exposure to the child, or to a staff member that feels uncomfortable in their presence. A conversation with a parent whose child has been harmed by school violence, or with someone's loved one who works here who has likewise been harmed are conversations that I never, ever want to have. I ask you all to contemplate that burden as a board member we face. Being respectful of time and moving on, what seems to have been glossed over is the undeniable legal liability that not hiring an SRO could potentially subject the district unto. You might ask, "What is that, and why should I care?" Excuse me, allow me, please. It means that the school could ultimately be sued and forced to shell out a big chunk of change. Doing so can have a trickle-down effect on the district. I've spent the last two years being a board member with COVID, hearing about the legal liabilities and the importance of listening to our experts. I'm so glad I did. Those seem to have been the correct decisions to make. Now here we are this year, and the relevant experts are strongly advising us to hire an SRO. The overwhelming number of schools across the country, the state, and the region are using SROs. Within our own BOCs, we're the only district not to. Within our county, I believe there's one other small school in addition to us that currently do not have an SRO. I mention this as that being so, and as hiring an SRO has been established to be a reasonably affordable option, a legal standard of care has been established. By not hiring an SRO, we would be exposing the district and the board to possible tort lawsuits such as wrongful death, serious personal injury, and sexual assault. The duty of ours as a board to avoid placing the district in areas of potential liabilities, not hiring an SRO would be a major legal liability. That has been established. It having been established and still not hiring an SRO is even more of a legal liability. Ultimately, though, what I look forward to having an SRO, there's so many day-to-day reasons that have been so eloquently expressed by others. Another helping hand, another friendly face, another trustworthy adult to grace the halls for our students to benefit from. This position offers so many wonderful things and opportunities to our student and staff. In the end, it will add that last layer to the district's SEL plan as we move forward. If this motion passes, to those upset by that, if so, I ask you, please give this person a chance. You can certainly oppose the position, but the person that would fill that position, if passed, is still a person, a member of our community. Michelle and the rest of the board, I thank you for giving me this time. And when everyone has had their say, I'm ready to move on and vote. Thank you.
So I started preparing a long public statement, and I still have it, but I have chosen not to read that tonight for the reason that I feel I took an oath to do what I thought was best for our students here in this district. Every year, safety comes up as one of our main goals for the school, and I look at our faculty and our staff and our administration, and I just trusted them for the last two years through a pandemic, that we, I feel they did a tremendous job. We were very successful, and now they're coming to us with something else that they feel will keep our students safe. And I put my utmost trust into them, that they will go through this contract, that they will make sure that the training is done, and that anything that I can do as a board member to make our faculty, our staff, and our students, most importantly, feel safe and have another connection in this building, and that's what I'm here to do.
Thank you all very much for taking the time over the last three-plus months, years for Ellen, and for everybody in the community. Everybody that's come to the microphone in the last three months has come full of their heart, full of their care, and I appreciate that. But what I appreciate more, and I'm not talking about the SRO at the moment, obviously, but is the fact that we can do it civilly, that we can teach our children how to have these discussions, how to be friends with somebody and be opposed to the thoughts that they might have. And that's what we're here for. And so I thank you all for doing that and doing that well, because that doesn't happen in a lot of board meetings. And there's a lot of schools that can't do this. There's a lot of schools that the meetings have to end and people have to get pulled out of here, and that's not happening today. I was nervous because I never know what to expect when we come into meetings, when we know that there's a topic that brings multiple people to our meetings, although I wish people would come to all of our meetings, but that's outside the point. But the fact that we can do it, and we can do it this well, shows our children how to become better people. And at the end of the day, that's what matters. So if nothing else, tonight we've done that as a community, and we've done that well as a community together. So thank you. The motion is...
Can I?
Yep.
So we've all shared our feelings. If this motion is to move forward, in all transparency, what are the next steps? What happens next?
What happens next is it's turned over to Bill, and Bill takes in account, because we've all just told him to, the things that we have asked him to take in account for, which are the comments of our community. And it is then in Bill's hands to move forward. And it will not, from what I understand, will not come back to the table again unless there's something to, another reason to talk about it at another point. Does that help? Is that what you were...
So we wouldn't approve a finalized contract, or what would happen with the contract?
You would have to approve a finalized contract, yes. Yep. So what I would do is take the well-thought-out comments in regards to the contract. There's been some really good points made about the draft contract. There's some really good points made about the contract for the Syracuse City Schools. I would take those comments. I would work with our legal team to come up with another draft contract that I would present to the board based on all of that feedback for you to review and then either approve or say, go back to the drawing board, keep working on this contract. But in the essence of time, that has to be done very quickly.
And then I want some clarity, because I've heard different things at different times. What is our process in the hiring and interviewing of the SRO? Because one time, a lawyer said we should be, one time we said we shouldn't be. I'm not sure what we do as a board in that process.
So it would be done by a team of internal employees, administrators, SEL team, faculty and staff. We would interview the candidates. And then I would bring a motion, a recommendation to you of that candidate for you to either approve or not.
Keeping in mind all that's been raised.
Correct.
So there is a motion on the table. It was motioned and seconded in the last meeting. We've had discussion. My pause there was to allow for more, but this is another chance if we have more discussion. This would be the time. And if not, I will call for an individual vote. It has to be roll-called for this motion.
Yes, Matt will call your name, and you will... Would you like me to read the...
Is everybody ready?
I'll just say one final thing. If we're willing to disregard research and data whenever it doesn't fit the narrative that we want, then we're not a school that bases our decisions on research and data. And so I also think that if we're going to look at anecdotes, we can find anecdotes on either side on how school resource officers can help and how they can not help. We can find lots of people to mentor. We can hire people to mentor. There are so many great mentors in our school already, we can hire more if that's what we need. In any case, I believe that you don't need a gun and handcuffs to mentor a kid and to help them feel safe in a school. And I'll leave it there.
I will end with that. I have a responsibility for the safety and well-being of students, staff, community that comes into this hall, and I believe that an armed SRO is the best option available. And I can rest with that decision well.
I'll pass it to Matt now.
Do you want me to just read that one more time?
Read the motion.
So the recommended action is a motion to enter into an agreement with Madison County Sheriff's Office for School Resource Officer Services during the 2022-23 school year as recommended by the superintendent. So vote by roll call, so that Michelle Jacobson.
I move, or I. I always forget the word. I. Sorry.
Jan Jones.
Aye.
Paul Dupus.
Nay.
Ellen Marson.
Aye.
Travis Evans.
Aye.
Moving to new business. I need a motion to accept the resignation of Susan Stradling as a teacher, aide, bus aide, effective August 22, 2022, with sincere appreciation for services rendered to the district.
I'll move.
Second. Discussion would be in executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the appointment of Jody Chantel as probationary executive secretary, district clerk, effective December 1, 2022, as recommended by the superintendent.
I will move.
Second. Discussion would be in executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I need a motion to approve the appointment of Caitlin...
Hertzendorf.
Thank you. Sorry, Caitlin. As probationary speech-language pathologist, effective September 1, 2022, through June 30, 2026, as recommended by the director of PPS and superintendent.
Move.
Second.
Discussion would be in executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I need a motion for the appointment of Jessica O'Reilly as probationary part-time... I need a motion to, for the appointment of Jessica O'Reilly as probationary part-time teacher, bus aide, effective September 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, as recommended by the director of PPS and superintendent.
I'll move.
Second.
Discussion would be in executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I need a motion to approve the appointment of Ashley...
Alyssa.
Sorry, Alyssa. See, I even got the first name wrong.
Baluch.
Baluch. As probationary part-time teacher, bus aide, effective September 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, as recommended by the director of PPS and superintendent.
I'll move.
Second.
All those, discussion would be in executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the appointment of Shelby Penner as probationary part-time teacher, bus aide, effective September 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, as recommended by the director of PPS and superintendent.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Discussion would be in executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the appointment of...
Batao Melu.
Batao Melu as probationary part-time teacher, bus aide, effective September 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, as recommended by the director of PPS and superintendent.
I'll move. Second.
Discussion would be in executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I need a motion to approve the appointment of Sandra White as a part-time food service helper, effective September 7, 2022, as recommended by the food service manager and superintendent.
I'll move.
Second.
Discussion would be in executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I need a motion to approve the appointment of Samantha Simchik as part-time food service helper, effective September 6, 2022, as recommended by the food service manager and superintendent.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Discussion would be in executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I need a motion to approve the recommendations of the committees on special education and preschool special education.
I'll move.
Second.
Discussion would be in executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the following as advisors and volunteers for the 2022-2023 fall play, The Dining Room, contingent upon COVID-19 status and recommended, as recommended by the secondary principal and superintendent.
I'll move. I'll second.
Discussion.
I'm just going to comment. I have been advised, I do not need to abstain, but I'm going to acknowledge that one of these people is a family member.
There you go. Thank you to all. All those in favor?
Aye.
I lose my train of thought, sorry.
Sorry, I had a real...
Administrators' reports. They're verbal. They were not written this month. They will go back to written next month due to opening of school. We thought that we would let them focus on that instead of the write-ups. So... Want to go first, Mark?
Sure.
All right, Mark's up.
So now that we're started, I can admit that last two days, I was quite concerned at our ability to get the school back together, but Don, part of the construction crew, Randy, teachers that got into their rooms last minute to try to get everything set up so that the students could be in classes yesterday, did a wonderful job, and I can't be happier with the work that they did to pull it together. I think the last couple of days have done very well. One of the concerns, every year is drop off and pickup. That's always a difficult thing here for the configuration of our school, but I think that the last two days have gone very well, returning the buses back into the circle and have people return to the way we used to do things, with some added support with people out there helping along the way. So a very good first couple of days, and a lot of people we thank for all the work that we did all together.
Thank you. Elementary?
So I just have to echo Mark's appreciation for the building and ground staff. In the intermediate wing, the teachers have been busy putting their rooms back together. The hallies look amazing, the classrooms look amazing, and everybody is just happy to welcome the students back. I couldn't be happier being here at the end of day two. So we have been doing a lot, so I'm going to read them kind of quickly just so you get a taste of what we've been working on. And then next month, I'm happy to write more in-depth discussion on those. So we're really happy to welcome our new faculty members back. We've been busy setting up mentoring partnerships, which is going great, having some of our veteran teachers work with the new faculty, and it's been really nice. And a very quick cohesion of our elementary staff, I think, this year, so it's been just a joy to really watch what happened. Setting up after-school programs and advisors, so in the elementary, we really are working hard to get handbooks put together for students and parents so that you can see the year at a glance, at least in general. We offered a lot last year, and we just really would like parents and students to see what's coming, even if it's not here right now, and then they can choose what their families, what they're interested in doing. We also just today submitted the final revisions to our report cards, and that was a year-long process. It was based off of parent surveys, elementary steering, feedback, teacher feedback, and teachers' surveys, as well as student surveys. So it was really nice to hear all the voices. And we put together our report card revision that we're excited to roll out, but it's not, it will be averaging, it will be weighted, and I'm sure we can adapt it again in the future. Teachers have started implementing new curriculum in science, based on next-generation standards, so we had about 30 totes delivered. Every single class, grade K-5, has a new unit to work on, and so they're really, really excited to get to work on those. All the materials are in the totes, as well as curriculum and instructional plans, so super excited. It's kind of like Christmas morning in the elementary a couple of days ago. In addition, we have started implementing our K-2 new units in the reading and writing workshop, so those were delayed a little bit, but there was an adaptive version that was rolled out in time for school, so that was really neat. There's a formal focus in reading, writing, phonics, and decoding, so we're excited. And teachers in K-2 are working together to start implementing those new units as well. The next thing that's kind of on the horizon is we're going to be investigating some additional curriculum for our everyday math curriculum, which we decided last year after the pilot to continue to use, so they're going to be taking over some additional curriculum materials too. So more on that.
Chris?
Hello.
Hello. How'd you find you?
Not many exciting things to report from the technology, and sort of equally what the other administrators already spoken about, the hard work and dedication of our staff here. Our extremely small but mighty technology department has been busy trying to smooth out pumps the first few days. Of course, we don't know the pumps are there until we start running them over, which they are, but I think we're pretty close, trying to get students and teachers everything they need to be successful. That's where we're at.
Great. An update from Kevin?
Kevin couldn't be here tonight.
Okay, so we're good there?
Yep.
Okay.
Matt?
No, I like to, like, forget about him. Now, Matt, your turn.
Yeah, I would also like to reiterate just how thankful we are for everybody's patience and hard work. It is remarkable what took place the last two weeks to get this building looking where it is. If you were here at the August board meeting or even a week ago, I'd have to see what this building looked like, so a lot of hard work. Thank you for the patience of our kids, our faculty and staff. It's great to have everybody back and utilizing this building as it should be. In the world of school finance, which is always exciting, just as a reminder, next month before our October board meeting, we'll have our independent audit finalized and presented. We've been very busy this summer closing the books and wrapping up fiscal year 2022, so don't anticipate any surprises. Everything's in good shape, so...
So we're going to have an audit meeting before the meeting?
Yes, 5:30 before the meeting.
5:30?
Yep.
I don't have that written down, so...
I don't either.
Hold your thought right there.
So we will have additional time?
Yes.
Yeah. That's October?
October 13.
October 13 to 5:30 prior to the regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay. Doesn't happen if it's not on there, sorry.
Exactly.
Not on the calendar, should not happen?
Yes. Other than that, things are good. Thank you. So I will continue to echo what the administrators have talked about. You know, a huge shout-out has to go to Randy Freeman and his team. Throughout this summer, this building has been torn apart in every facet of the campus. And if you have been in here throughout the summer and then seen the transformation as you walk in tonight, it's incredible. And they worked a lot of long hours in very adverse conditions, and they need to be recognized and applauded because they just, they went above and beyond. And then our faculty and staff have been so flexible, so understanding, and so accommodating. You know, we talk about being a team a lot, and it was truly evident because they weren't able to get into their classrooms until last minute, some of them the day before school. And there wasn't complaints, they understood, they were flexible and accommodating, and that's what a team is all about, and we truly are a team here. So I can't thank them enough for their flexibility and understanding. Our students, it was great to see everybody back smiling. The last two days, kids were excited to be back, teachers were excited to be back, parents were excited to have their kids back in school, so it was a great start. And talking about great starts, two of our board goals, one of them was full implementation of restorative practices and professional development around diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. And we had two really good days with two really good facilitators. We had Susie Peterson from the International Institute of Restorative Practices come and spend our first opening day with us and laid the framework from the year-long PD that our staff is going to have about restorative practices, what that means, some common language, and it really set the tone for our work going forward. Our next PD with her will be focused around restorative circles and bringing students together in circles and how to conduct and facilitate circles for more of that restorative model as opposed to the disciplinary model. So we're excited about that. And then we also had on day two, we had two representatives from the Q Center, from the ARC in Syracuse. And the Q Center is a safe space for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and questioning the use of their families and allies to gather, share, and receive support. And they came and celebrated diversity with us, how to, how to explore that, have conversations with students, so everyone is accepted into our team, and that's truly what it is. So we had a really good PD around that. We will continue with our DEI initiatives throughout the year, but those were two really good kickoff professional developments. Our capital project is ongoing. It was a little tense at the end, getting things done, but we got things done, and we were ready to open the doors. There's still construction that'll be going on throughout the year. Again, our faculty and staff and our students have been really flexible. Sometimes it's a little noisy. There's construction workers in and out. They have all been vetted. We are making sure doors are closed as part of our safety procedures and mitigation procedures, so that'll be ongoing throughout the year, and we're excited about the outcome. As you can see, we have some outcomes, the elementary classrooms, our music suite, there's new lights in our entryway, we have new safety measures, the fax room and the LGI are being redone, so the locker rooms are in progress. They will be done in mid-October, so we're moving along. It's a huge amount of work that has been done and will continue to be done, so, but we're moving along. So it's my impression. A great start to the year.
You forgot to say, we had so much fun at opening when I made everybody line up in birthday order. The teachers loved that I made them do that.
Yep.
You could hear how much they loved it, but they did it really quickly, and they found birthday buddies out of it, so that was fun.
One other thing we need to discuss is having a board table at Open House.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. So your thoughts on that? I know we talked about it previously. We're going to have some board seats available, so we want to give and present some information to the community on what it means to be a board member, what that looks like, duties, responsibilities, roles. So if you want to have a table, I can reach out to NISBA and see if they'll have a representative that would come up.
That would be great.
If they can't send some, I know they have information.
They do.
I know they do, yeah.
So if we could get some of those booklets about what it means to be a board member, what it, if they can't send a person, then I think...
I've given a lot of time to this, and I would like to make this request. I agree, this is a great idea. I wish we commit to it for three years.
To what?
Having a, what it means to be a board member at Open House.
Yeah.
I think that's only fair to all of us.
Absolutely.
So I will fully support this if it happens in three years in succession.
Sure.
Thank you.
Just as long as nobody looks too hard for what the salary is.
It doubles every year.
Yes.
Knowledge sharing. Anyone this month? Can we make sure, just make a note, Matt, that we need to add on the committee reports for next month? They're not on here, but it's the beginning of the year, we're fine.
We're going to have to, yeah.
Advocacy update?
You all should have received the NISBA proposed resolutions book, so I would ask, there is a lot of them, there's over 40, but I do have to attend that meeting on October 17th. I would like everyone's input, so if everyone could just take time to read through those, give me just a yes, no, vote on each one of those so that I can vote in favor of the board, that would be great.
Okay. Participation's up next, but I just had a thought that I'm going to bring up now. We've got the NISBA Board Convention in October that we've signed up for. I don't know who's going or whatnot, but Bill and I are thinking that we would leave here on noon that Thursday, so if that helps people with their schedule, so it'd be Thursday afternoon, we would miss the Thursday morning pieces, but it doesn't look like we're missing much, so Thursday afternoon, Friday, and Saturday morning. And we'll come back and forth for those in a couple of vehicles if needed, but...
Yeah, I fear it's going to conflict with a work-related thing now, so a couple of vehicles would be good.
Yeah. So we can figure out how we want to get there as we get closer, but that's just, just to talk about the timeframe.
We see the schedule.
Um, and I think that's it. So now the floor is open for public participation. Please remember the rules I read in the beginning of the meeting, because I don't really want to read them again, but the microphone is open, and looking online, there are no comments, so... You don't have to run.
You don't have to run.
People might not be going. Ed Witherspoon again. So I just wanted to thank the board for the openness with which you conducted these meetings, the invitation that you gave to community members to speak, and the attention that you gave to community comments. So, and I think, you know, I can speak for myself, and I bet a lot of people who maybe had some reluctance about hiring an SRO, I think that we, as parents, will want to do whatever we can to make this person a, you know, to support the person, whoever you end up hiring into this position. So at least, you know, it's, I guess, really kind of echoing what Michelle said a minute ago about feeling good about the democratic process.
With that, we have no executive session this evening. It's wonderful. So could I please have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll move. No, I'll second.
Ellen, move. Jen, seconded. It is 8:10 PM. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you, everybody.